I'd like to call the meeting to order and thank everyone for their attendance and look forward to a good meeting. I would like to extend to Mr. Moss our thoughts towards his nephew being injured and we're all there praying for a good recovery.
Thank you, Mayor. I do appreciate your call. It was very kind.
Happy to do it. Okay, well, we'll get started with the Development Authority Annual Report. Mr. Spoor?
I just call on our great Economic Development Director, Warren Harris, to introduce the topic, and he's got some members of the authority.
Great Economic Development Director.
Yeah, I tell you what, man. Growing up in the world. Now, again, thank you, Mr. Manager and Mayor, members of council. This is always a time in the work that we do as a part of economic development where we can share with you some of the highlights of our activities for this year. And I think what you hear today is something short of remarkable in terms of the environment, the marketplace, the challenges that are still out there in the economy, and the results that we were able to achieve collectively as a focus group with your vision and leadership. So, I'm proud to ask Boo Toohey, our outgoing Chair of the Virginia Beach Development Authority, to come forward and present this past year's annual report.
Toohey, we welcome you. Glad to have you here.
Thanks, y'all. It's always exciting and a little sweaty to come up and see y'all. And we're going to try to coordinate these slides. Who's clicking? Ah, okay, Scott is. Because I know I can't do both. Good morning, Mayor Sesam. Good morning, good afternoon, Mayor Sesams, Vice Mayor Jones, and members of City Council. On behalf of the Development Authority, I'm really excited to take a few moments to share with you our annual report. Behind me, you see a list of those citizens that make up our Development Authority team. With us today, we have Dot Wood and Shaline Moy. They always are there to support me, and they do quite a bit to help our city move forward. But I want you to know first that each of us on the Authority understands our mission, and we know that it is to support your vision and to promote the City of Virginia Beach brand in an effort to grow jobs for our citizens and to increase the city's economic base not only on a domestic level but internationally. Now, 2014, 2015 was a successful year in all target areas. Your direction to the development team was clear: be strategic, be aggressive, and as a result, the numbers are big. Behind me, you see a snapshot of our year, and it is all about the numbers, positive numbers, that represent real economic growth for City of Virginia Beach. Over the past year, 52 announcements resulted in 2,200 new jobs, and most importantly, we retained over 5,500 existing jobs that could have been in jeopardy. That's one announcement a week, one success a week. Nearly 40% of the new jobs reported fell in our target area of technology, which is one of the reasons Virginia Beach is recognized as one of the best cities in America for STEM business opportunities. We are a high-tech player. Our city's unemployment rate remains the lowest in coastal Virginia and well below the state and national average. Our progress has been steady and measurable. We are creating true opportunities for our residents and businesses to invest in Virginia Beach. Ladies and gentlemen, how did we do this? Simply stated, it's the team: your vision and direction along with highly skilled professionals that understand the mission. One particular mention, one particular point is mentioned, the EDIP program. In 1994, you created EDIP funding stream that has allowed our city to compete in the economic market of today, and it is a competitive market. Most times, EDIP grants make the difference. The EDIP grants allow our professionals, a much-needed funding source, to compete. Last year, with EDIP funds, we leveraged $1 in investment grants and returned more than $37 in new private investment for our cities. A total of $1.6 million of grants helped to create and retain over 2,200 jobs with average annual salaries of, sorry, exceeding $42,000. Matter of fact, the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics now ranks the City of Virginia Beach (MSA) number three in the country for rate of hourly wage growth. Interesting to note, over the last 20 years, Virginia Beach Development Authority has awarded 190 grants worth over $50 million, which created and retained over 31,000 jobs and $1.9 billion in new capital investment. It's a good return. The numbers are big. The numbers represent positive economic growth for our city. A short note on bonds. In fiscal year 2014-2015, the Development Authority issued $45 million in revenue bonds and $52 million in public facility bonds. These bonds are another tool allowing the Authority to stay ahead of competition. Our key projects and initiatives, this slide is all about the numbers. And please note the numbers. But yes, we are in the craft beer business with Green Flashbury relocating their new East Coast facility in Corporate Landing, and that's really important. People thought Corporate Landing wasn't growing, but it is growing, and it's growing because you had the forethought to bank the land. Without the land, we wouldn't have a shovel-ready spot for them to come. The 18 acres in London Bridge is a repeat of your vision. You, the council, are continuing to bank land for our future. Having land ready and accessible for business develop cannot be overstated. Of course, we're the best city in the world, but if a company has no place to land to build, they will locate elsewhere. It's as simple as that. I respectfully ask that as the city updates its comprehensive land plan, please take a hard look at protecting and increasing our inventory of shovel-ready sites. Now for a favorite of mine, the Town Center. Wow, what a huge win for our economic base, our citizens. There's a place to live, a place to play, a place to work. 15 years ago, our city broke ground, and today, Town Center stands tall as a jewel for the city. It offers high-salaried businesses, high-salaried jobs, upscale retailers, and a unique living environment for our citizens. Again, your commitment to economic growth of Town Center has flourished, and we are positioning our city for the next 15 growth years. Now, this one, everybody loves the amphitheater. You know, Farm Bureau Live, 19 years, and it keeps getting better. It's recognized as one of the top amphitheaters in the country. The citizens of Virginia Beach love it, but, as you realize, it has become a venue for all of coastal Virginia. They come, they spend, they help our economic base. We have got, the city has been able to get $20.3 million in direct revenue from the amphitheater. What a wise investment on your part. Now, I've mentioned target approach to economic development. I did it last year, I did it again this year, for an important reason: because Virginia Beach's business growth is not by accident. Hold it, y'all. It's because we have a strategic plan. We target businesses and industries that fit our vision for growth, what we feel we need. Our team believes that economic diversity is key to creating a sustainable economy for the city. Our seven target sectors, as you well know, technology and information systems, advanced manufacturing, bio and life science, professional services, maritime and logistics, defense and retail. And oh, technology. I lost half my speech because of technology, just to let you know. But, technology is creating jobs for tomorrow. These are high-paying jobs that appeal to the millennium, not me, the millennium, our children and our grandchildren. Again, look at the numbers. 38% of all new jobs created this past year were in the technology sector. Virginia Beach MSA is now ranked 17th in the country by the Brookings Institute for Advanced Industry Jobs. In other words, those that are most STEM-intensive. Yes, we're creating jobs for today, but more importantly, we are laying the groundwork for jobs of tomorrow. With technology comes an emphasis on information security. Our business and defense communities are challenged every day with protection issues. The past year, economic development has taken huge strides in bringing together a viable cybersecurity business center. The Authority hosted Coastal Virginia's first cybersecurity roundtable. More than 60 industry leaders attended. We had a need, we saw the need, and we fit the bill. The follow-up meeting is scheduled for October 13th. Now, biolife sciences. In March 2013, Mr. Mayor, you set another direction for our city's growth by planting the proverbial biosciences flag in the ground. The Bio Task Force was broad and diverse. The appointment of Tom Franz and Ronnie Thomas as co-chairs was brilliant. Council, you followed up by supporting and approving the recommendations of the task force, and you put the funding in place for Phase 1 of the implementation strategy. Teamwork, I would say. Vision for the future. The task force is only two years old, but we have positive measurable results. Note the slide. Operation Smile and International Headquarters, look at the people they bring in year after year from now on, plus 23 new jobs. Life Net, 160 new jobs. Malina, healthcare opened its first facility in Virginia Beach. These are wonderful, measurable economic growth avenues. These are real jobs that you all created. Okay, manufacturing. I'm a manufacturer. People say manufacturing is dead. Oh, no, not in Virginia Beach. On the contrary, it is alive and growing in our fair city. The Authority is committed to the growth of new and existing companies in this highly intense job sector. On a personal note, I was fortunate to be part of a group that met with Olaat, North American Group, in an effort to promote our city. We were successful. Their headquarters is now located in the best city in the world, our city, Virginia Beach. Look at the slide, 238 new jobs. Your vision's working. You should be proud. And this vision you have, what is this vision you have? Your commitment to economic growth is evident in your recognition that small businesses are the foundation for healthy communities. Look at the numbers. 25% of our announced projects were SWAM companies, creating 274 new jobs with more than $11 million in investment. 17 Virginia Beach companies are ranked in the INC 5,000 list of the fastest-growing companies in America. In coastal Virginia, we are the hub for entrepreneurs and small business. One of every three startups happened in Virginia Beach. Please also take note, Virginia Beach is only one of 50 U.S. cities selected by Kaufman Foundation to establish a 1 Million Cups Entrepreneurial Engagement Program. Why? It's the team. It's your vision, and each and every professional that plays a part in the economic development in our city, from the city manager down. In today's environment, we all know we are truly a global community. Six years ago, City Council challenged the Authority to make and to take Virginia Beach to the global level. Again, your vision. And they responded by bringing the global market to Virginia Beach. We now brand Virginia Beach not only as a global tourist destination but as a growth destination for international investment. Your commitment to fund the office in Düsseldorf, Germany, has proved critical in our outreach for international opportunities. To be repetitive, look at the results. 130 new leads generated by European office. 30% of our prospect activity is now international. This one I love. Virginia Beach is home to the North American headquarters of over 20 foreign companies. Virginia Beach, we are making a stand. Your vision and our commitment is making it happen. So, bringing all these businesses in, what have we seen that is the most important issue for these companies? Everyone knows, it's workforce. Each business must have a pool of educated and/or trained individuals ready to work. For that basic reason, the Authority is continuously investing in workforce development programs. Let me share a personal note. When I first joined the Authority, I became liaison for workforce development, which was then and is still now headed by Jerry Stewart. And Jerry and I would go out and visit all types of businesses, just to listen, just to learn, what did they need, how the Authority could help them turn challenges into opportunities for growth in our city. Our outreach continues to be about getting people together to talk and solve common problems. Have we been successful? Yes. We now have a model workforce development program with the help and leadership of our mayor, who is directly engaged in a workforce development initiative specifically for manufacturers. For the past two years, the Authority has been working with leadership of manufacturing companies and workforce development partners such as Tidewater Community College to create a comprehensive training partnership, and it's happened. The Authority has made inroads. The team has announced a joint training program based on working together to improve the city's workforce. Again, the Authority saw your vision and acted on it. And a special thanks also to the private manufacturers that stepped up, Steel, IMS Gear, Bush, and Hermes for their creativity and collaboration in turning a workforce challenge into an opportunity for economic growth. Now, Growth Smart, our motto in this city, it's never too young to learn. Education of our youth is paramount for workforce development. That is why the Authority is involved with Growth Smart. Growth Smart takes a multifaceted approach to ensuring our youngest citizens get the best possible start in life. The work begins with parents before the child is born, helping to provide the basic resources and education necessary to ensure a healthy childhood. This award-winning program engages with early childhood educational providers and Small Business Development Center of Hampton Roads to get our youngest citizens ready for school. The program started in Virginia Beach 11 years ago. Over this time, the percentage of children entering kindergarten ready to learn has increased from 79% to 90%. In an effort to sustain and build upon Growth Smart's successes, the Virginia Beach Growth Smart Foundation was incorporated. The foundation, now headed by Ann Cranchall of Kaufman &amp; Cannoles, engages influential business leaders to serve as champions for early education as an economic imperative. Okay, this next slide is an old friend. Yes, Oceana. What a positive, a repeat history, excuse me, a repeat success for our city. This year, we received another award, the Gold Excellent Award for Real Estate Redevelopment and Reuse from the International Economic Development Council. We have met our goals to reduce non-conforming uses around NAS Oceana. Not only has the city reduced residential encroachment, to date, 53 non-conforming commercial properties have been eliminated from target areas surrounding the base. And we have used EDIP grants to six businesses that leverage the creation of $13.6 million in new capital investment for the city. Yes, Oceana reaffirms that local government and the military are partners and share common goals. Again, your vision is a community that lives together, can grow together. Okay, I've highlighted our results, but please note, and I don't even know if I need to say this, you realize that none of this comes easy. All of it comes with hard work. Our economic development team spends each day working strategic marketing plans to implement your vision. Yes, the Authority works to attract new business, but in my mind, more importantly, they work harder to keep the businesses that are already here. We want to obtain the business, we want to grow the business, we want them to stay in Virginia Beach. Last year, the department made more than 700 direct contacts with existing businesses. Again, the numbers are on the slide. Your vision, our philosophy, reach out and touch business makers in our target market sectors wherever they are. We're constantly getting your vision, and one most certainly was to build the Virginia Beach brand for existing and potential prospects and in an effort to attract qualified workforce. As a result, the Economic Development Authority launched an exciting new initiative with Fortune Magazine. That proved, wait a minute, that proved the opportunity to directly contact 500 hand-selected C-level executives in our target sectors. You've all received copies of this, and I'm excited to report that the results look good early on. They are listed, I believe, up here, and I don't want to have to read them for you, but the thing that I thought was most important was people were comparing our marketing efforts to someone else's, to another city's, and they said we were better. We made an impact on them. And if you look at the last bullet point, there were 11% of the people actually took action. They called us back, or they went to the website to find more about our city. So, the numbers are good. Our brand-building efforts are making an impact. On this next slide, we recognize that technology is essential ingredient or tool of economic growth and job creation. We live in a digital world, and we cannot rely on printed media to spread the word of Virginia Beach. Two things on this particular slide that I thought were most telling is that, excuse me, we are above the average with engagement levels at 38% over the industry average and a call-to-action rate of over 323%, better than the network average. People are reading about us. Whatever we're choosing to do is getting to the target market. They're understanding our message. They're being motivated to take action, to call us back. Now, last year was a good year, but you have to remember, this team of people you put together at Economic Development, they don't stop. They're committed to doing, to carrying out your vision, to promoting the city, to taking it to the next level. 2016, we have momentum now, but 2016 is set up to be the best year in our city's history. We will continue to promote these programs and to develop the marketing program for the cyber technology, which I think is really an untapped market. We are going to reach out to small businesses and entrepreneurs. Every one of these things will be expanded. They've set the groundwork. They're going to make sure that 2016, we start to accomplish the goals even more so. And last slide, this is the part I lost, y'all, so this is where we're stopping. I guess one of the things I want to say, I'm really passionate about economic development, and I think a lot of, it starts first with you all, though. You know, leading the city is not easy, and you all get a lot of heat from a lot of people that don't even understand what they're giving you heat about, and I know that. But I want you to know that what I've gone over here are real concrete results, and these results are there because you all led us, and you all had a vision, and you all worked together, from the city manager down to every single employee. And because you all set the tone, the group that you have together, led by Warren Harris, they hear you. They work for you. They work for the city, and they create positive results. And I hope in closing that, I mean, I know there are a lot of people, and I'm sure I've left out something. I know we have to be regional, we live in a great state, but we do live in the best city in the world, and I'll give you that, Will. But I'll also tell you, as head of Economic Development, we have the cream of the crop under Warren Harris' leadership. And I think they deserve, and I know I stumble and fall when I do this, but it's real, you guys, and the trust that you develop between City Council and the city manager and his workforce and Warren's group, that's what takes us forward. We can never fight internally. We have to trust one another, and we have to appreciate what each other does, because this is a great city and is led by great leaders. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from council members? Got a couple of questions.
Well, just an observation, first of all, I probably duplicated the math through the book, but I counted 1,526 jobs that we gained.
Oh, Mr. Moss, I've had a hard time doing this, crying out loud.
Well, no, I'm sharing it.
I'm sorry, what did I do wrong?
You have to learn to express yourself.
I'm sorry.
We got without issuing grants, just on the merits of our economy, which I think is great.
It is.
Versus the 826 that we had to use grants for, so I thought that was a real plus. I don't think I duplicated, but I might, but I thought it was a good number to know what the cumulative number was. I did see that chart about average wage.
Yes, sir.
Came out, because Mr. Spoor, at the time, I shared it, because, you know, there were 48 other communities that were higher, but because that number by itself doesn't tell you anything, because it doesn't tell you about the cost of living in those communities, so I would suggest you go back and look at that average wage, annualize it, and say, what's the percent of median family income, because that would tell you the affordability of your community, because in the end, that's what workers want to be able to do. If you make $40 an hour in New York City, would you rather make $28 an hour in, you know, Hampton Roads? Probably, I can assure you, you'd probably be better off in Hampton Roads, and I think that's something that doesn't come across when you just look at those blind numbers. They're just an interval listing that doesn't convey value. So, I would commend you to look at that. And the other observation was, on that cybersecurity initiative that you had.
Yes, sir.
A key part of that is coptology, which has a lot to do with high-order mathematics. So, that's going to take a lot of partnership with universities or to get the kind of talent that makes that work. It's the algorithm piece of that that drives, that makes that work, not just the hardware.
And you know why it's good? See, I'm in the concrete business, and you're in the numbers business, so we need you to tell us that.
But I would be heading up an ODU, because they ought to be a good place, it's for that, good partnership.
Yes, sir.
I'll look at Shannon.
On the Growth Smart slide, can you go back to that, Scott? Just clarify for me. The help participating businesses increase their revenues by an average of 23%. How did you measure that?
Well, and that's with Growth Smart, actually, and working with the Small Business Development Center of Hampton Roads, talking with the businesses that are involved in the program, a lot of daycare service providers, primarily, and how they're being prepared to provide their services at a higher level, knowing what the regulations are, knowing really how to interact, what the true needs are.
So, this was for the childcare centers to be able to increase their?
Right, yeah.
I was thinking it was indirect for businesses.
No, no, no. These are the actual childcare centers that participate with the Small Business Development Center and our group, and it's shown that that relationship has allowed them to increase their revenues by 23%.
I see, I got you. Okay.
Benny?
Boo, I'd just like to say thank you for that wonderful presentation. That's one of the best we've had since I've been here. And I just had a kind of an observation and a question for John. When we were going during our campaign, I know that you were a major opponent to public private partnerships. The Virginia Beach Amphitheater brings in about $20.3 million in revenue a year. I know you were against it at the time in hindsight.
We wanted to get into a detailed debate about economic analysis, but I don't concede that that was a good venue. And if we had the time, about an hour, maybe a couple of days, I could explain that. It all depends on how you count the numbers.
Okay, who else? Bobby?
Thank you, and Warren, you know, thank you all for doing, you really do a great service for the city, but I also wanted to give you a particular shout-out. You know, as we discussed during the retreat, we got that small business task force that we're working on studying and how to really, you know, increase especially the small business sector and your folks' participation, Jeff Smith and everybody. I think we're going to be bringing forward some recommendations in the very near future that are really going to take a great system and even make it better. And I also want to give Doug Smith a shout-out, because he's working on his end to also improve the business process with permits and inspections and, you know, getting plans and everything that'll create that real environment that we are the most, you know, business-welcoming city in the Commonwealth, and that, you know, that's our goal, but I just wanted to give the two organizations a major shout-out, because I think we're on a verge of something really good here.
Fantastic.
Other questions or comments? I'll wind it up by, I hope, you know, she referred to passion, but that passion that Boo has comes from the love of the city. And, you know, so Boo, the bad news is that you're not going to be chairing the committee anymore, and we're really going to miss you. You've done an excellent job. You really have been dedicated for a number of years, and thank you for telling us we get the credit, but it is a partnership, and y'all have been great partners under your leadership, and we just, you know, we're going to miss you. Now, you are sitting beside another young lady that has a lot of love for our city and passion, too, and Dot is going to be the next chairman of Economic Development. So, they're passing the gavel today, I guess, but.
This morning, this morning, the authority.
And Warren, to your entire staff, you know, I think you know the support you have from this body.
Sure.
And we're always there for y'all. You know, this is what we need to do, and y'all do it every day. We can't let up one darn second doing this. It's competitive out there, and we're going to beat anybody that comes up against us. I'm confident of that, but we got to be in the game every day, and we got to keep moving forward, and this is how we do bring in new revenues to our city. This is how we do bring in jobs. This is how we do get our salaries up where we need to get them up, and this is where we get the capital investment that we need. So, to the new chairman, we're with you. Go out there and get him, Boo. Thank you so much for everything you've done.
Thank you.
All righty.
Strong will.
Hmm?
Strong will.
You ain't lying.
That's a strong will.
Boo, you used to be our neighbor.
That means a lot coming from you.
Before we had you. Did she get on that radio?
It falls really far, but he's nice.
Well, you worked around the bank, didn't you? All righty, we'll now move on to City Council comments. Robert Dyer.
Yeah, thank you. An issue that, you know, I was asked to bring up by a number of people, by a number of phone calls that I got over to. of phone calls that I got over the past couple of weeks from people. And I think there's a problem, a little problem emerging with perception and communication where there are group homes opening up in neighborhoods and everything, and people are finding out that, you know, they're finding out ex post facto that what's going on. And there is concern, I had a phone call in my district about potential group home for, you know, sex offenders, I was told, and then other people that might have been felons or something like that. I'm just wondering, Mr. Spoor, if we could have a workshop or a presentation from Andy about what, you know, how group homes are put into neighborhoods and how people are informed about it. I think if we built some bridges to communication, it might be helpful.
Glad to do that.
Amelia, then Shannon.
I was just mentioning on what you said, I did go to zoning and so forth, because we're having the same problem in Kempsville, and we realized it doesn't come down through us, because someone realized that I was on the state board.
Yep.
So they thought I was out there proving that. So we had to find out, it's a whole different process. So the young man in zoning would be great to, you know, brief everyone about, because he said, we are just a spoke in this wheel, and so that the community can understand. And sometimes it gets blown out of proportion, but especially if one neighborhood gets four or five, how can that be, you know, distributed in another form? Especially Fairfield has four now, so I have been talking with them about that. And on other comments, I'm sure you all saw the manager's update about the backpacks, and in each of those bags had little school supplies.
That's great.
We got 300 of them, so there are 285 new enrollees for Achievable Dream, and they were just excited about it, talked with the mayor, so it was good to have something like that shared from Office Depot and the National Foundation of Legislative Legislators.
Great. Shannon.
I wanted to talk about, or to make a comment about the group homes in the Rose. We had a situation in Rose Hall as well, where there were five, six, seven, I don't know, quite a few in homes within the, they were halfway houses, more or less, in that neighborhood. And we had a huge meeting, and the attorney's office came, and planning came as well, and spoke with the group, and there's not a whole lot we can do because of ADA laws and regulations, and it's just a matter of working with the community. There's really not that much, I mean, we can't do anything. It's, it's cases throughout, cases throughout the country that we can't.
Right. But the thing is that, you know, if we could do a better job, perhaps, of just building the bridge of communication and, you know, explaining to people, you know, what's going on in the process and, you know, just maybe pay, you know, do a, you know, better job, you know, equating to communities, you know, and we get better integration that way.
Barbara?
Last week, you had sent us this packet about the House Bill 2, the HB 2 funding for, for road projects and so forth, and offered to do a PowerPoint today if we needed it. You know, that I don't think is necessary if these criteria or these projects have to be presented by September 30th. But at some point, I would kind of like to hear some update on the whole state funding for transportation issue. This gets confusing.
You think?
You know, now we've got this ranking system for something that we may or may not get some money for, and then, but I wonder, what do we do about all the other road projects that are in the, in the list?
I strongly, I think the council should have a presentation, and I assure you, I will learn something new with that presentation, because every time I get one, I'm learning something new. I really am.
New or different.
Because it keeps changing.
It does. It does. And interpretation is another key.
Well, that's the thing, yeah.
We can set that up in the next couple of months.
John?
If we can, I'd like just, if there's any feedback from the state, I'd like to know just where we were in the competition, or just what Alabama did to secure the Airbus manufacturing plant. That caught my attention. I know we have the Rolls- Royce engine facility in Virginia. We have a lot of aviation-qualified kind of people, but I'm just interested how that all worked out, not that we can do anything about it, but it'd be interesting to understand the chemistry of that deal, just from an education point of view. And secondly, there was an article in the paper where Joe Machard, maybe one of the House delegates, gave a presentation to a realtor group all about sea-level rise and what was happening in the insurance industry and how that even factors into the BRAC process in the future. So I don't know if we can get copies of that, or if that's something that merits actually receiving ourselves, you know, if it's passively understandable, then that's much preferred to a death-by-PowerPoint presentation. But however, but the education that's there, I think, would be, would be very, very helpful. And to your point, Barbara, one of the things that caught me in that listing, and I did send a note on it, was, and I went back and looked at not the January 17th, but the summer review of all road projects, remember, we had one this summer where they went through all the projects? One was Rosemont and Holland had the highest incident of traffic accident, which caught me by surprise, of in Hampton Roads. But yet, it wasn't listed as a safety project, and I understand there's a lot of chemistry that goes in that, but what would be helpful in that presentation is to understand for each of those projects, what was the individual criterion, how were they scored? Not just where they ended up, but explain, decompose the elements that got them there, because I think just getting the raw number, you don't understand the relative ranking and how that was derived, and I just see a product. But it's like when a school teacher says, show me your work. Okay, I want to see the work, so I can understand the answer. Those are my three comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
I've got one comment. I was at a press conference this morning from Cox Communications at the Western Virginia Beach Town Center, where they announced the first family in the state of Virginia that is hooked up to gig internet. A lot of this has come about as a result of the conversation that the Internet Task Force has brought about, and so.
I think you got their attention.
I'm sorry?
I think you got their attention.
Were you the first customer?
No, 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 I wish, I wish. They don't offer in my area yet, but it is an exciting thing. They have rolled that out in Virginia Beach before they rolled it out in Northern Virginia, which is a very big deal. This is the first gig internet in the state of Virginia, so it's very exciting.
Very good, very good. Other council comments before we move on? Okay, let's go to the agenda review there. Mr. Vice Mayor?
All right. Got you. Ordinances. Anybody have any comments on any of the ordinances?
I do, Mr. Vice Mayor. Not surprisingly, from my constant position, we're buying ahead of need. I'm voting no on number one.
No on number one?
Correct. I'm not opposed to buying light rail.
Just one second. On number one, put me down as abstaining, please, while you're on there.
No problem, Mr. Mayor. And on number four, I have no problem buying light rail for Norfolk. Company can buy as many cars as the state wants, but I don't agree with the rationale that we're using to vote on it, so I'm voting no on number four.
And I will be voting no on number four also.
And I have an explanation for my vote, Mr. Mayor, at the time.
All right, any others? All right. Under planning, 2,700 International Parkway, Rose Hall. Shannon?
I have heard nothing. It's fine by me.
Hold on a minute. I'm abstaining on item number one.
All right, item two, Coliga Dukes, Princess Anne, Ms. Henley.
I haven't gotten any, from my emails, been down a week.
Number three, Ivy League Academy, Virginia Beach First Church of the Nazarenes. I'm fine with it. Good addition to the community out there. Four, Stain Studios at Old Brandon, Laskett Associates, Beach District, Mr. Earn.
I've heard no issues with that, Mr. Vice Mayor.
You say okay?
Yes, sir. Okay.
Five, Esperanza, Faronda, and Jerry, and Esperanza, Faronda, Centerville.
No, no problem.
Six, CCW Development Associates and Wayne Dupree, Beach District.
Mr. Vice Mayor, the adjacent property owners that share the condo association have asked for a deferral, which the applicant has agreed to.
Well, I'm glad to hear that.
If we can put that in, it's indefinite. I think it'll be okay when it comes back to us, but they just had a couple of things they needed to.
Indefinite deferral.
Yeah, I think it'll be fine once it comes back to us, but they just had a few things they needed to get straightened.
Did you have something, Bo?
Yeah, while it's being deferred, I wasn't going to oppose it, but I'm really, I was concerned about it being in such a low area, and they're having to fill this and impacts with all that we're talking about with drainage and so forth. It seemed a little.
Yeah, number five.
I was concerned.
Six.
So while, while the deferral is, is happening, if we could get some kind of explanation from staff why it's okay and we're not doing damage, I sure would feel better about it.
Got that, Mr. Spoor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Number seven, application to City of Virginia Beach, change of zoning from before unconditional use for three housing resource center, Bayside District. I'm fine.
I have a comment, though. My only concern was, since we are both people, both the applicant and the people doing the work, when there's a decision or someone challenges the application to citizen, where does the independent review take place, since the city cannot objectively judge itself? So I'm asking the city manager, how do we adjudicate when we are the person being challenged as to our compliance, given that agreement looks like we're the, you know, the judge and the jury and the prosecutor? So where's the independent review? Do those come to you?
No.
Do those come back to us? How is that done? I don't know any process that doesn't have an independent adjudication.
Well, I think the independent adjudication in this case, if, if there was an instance of that, would be the court system.
But why should we make, burden the citizen with that kind of expense when we could have a, a way for us to do that administratively?
And I think the council's the only.
I'm voting no.
Group that can determine whether or not the zoning is consistent with the comp plan. That's the basic decision, and if you find yes, then I think that decision is independent from whether or not you build a facility.
I disagree, but I will vote no on that.
What numbers, huh? Seven A?
Seven.
Correct.
Seven A, but how about seven B?
I'm also voting no on that. I haven't voted for any SGA's except I think Centerville.
So you're voting against the Housing Resource Center or the zoning? What are you?
I'm voting no on the item as it's presented.
All right.
Insufficient oversight of the project is a material reason.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I believe that at everyone's place, there was a revised summary of terms for the Senior Resource Center item that we probably need to note in the agenda when this review, when it's read for the consent.
Right, I forgot to mention that. It was just clarifying.
It was clarifying the.
Okay. Okay, so we got that, I guess. All right, got it.